Welcome everyone, Assalamualaikum, peace be upon you. Welcome to the Islamic Center of Naperville School Board Candidate Virtual Forum for District 204. I want to start this forum with a small dua. Alhamdulillahiminashishanarrim, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, Rabbasidni Ilma. These three words, Rabbi Sidni Ilma are three small words with a powerful impact found in the Quran, Chapter 20, Verse 114. They mean, "My Lord, increase me in knowledge." This prayer was said by Prophet Muhammad, asking God to increase his knowledge. And we as Muslims repeat this because Islam is a proponent of education and encourages everyone to learn and seek knowledge. This goes beyond just IQ, it's asking God for personal growth, which could include knowledge to grow spiritually, intellectually, and financially. This event is organized by ICN's School District Engagement Committee, STEC, and this event is being recorded. My name is Sabah Heather, and I'm going to be your moderator today. The Islamic Center of Naperville serves over 5,000 families from District 204, 203, and 308. ICN is a nonpartisan, not-for-profit organization that does not support or oppose any candidates. Our goal is to educate the ICN community about the local elections and provide them the opportunity to get to know the candidates who are running to represent them on school boards for District 308, 203, and 204. We also aim to build bridges between the ICN community and the school boards to highlight the unique needs of the ICN community and help find ways to best support the school boards and administration to achieve what's best for all our students. Local elections have the most impact on our lives and the lives of our children. We hope that you have a plan on how to vote and for whom to vote. After this informative forum, you can also watch this forum later on YouTube under the ICN channel. Please share with family and friends and help spread awareness about the importance of local elections. On behalf of the ICN and STEC, we would like to thank all the candidates for taking the time out of their busy schedule during the campaign to engage with the ICN committee. Community, the candidates are elected to the school board to a four-year term. This year, District 204 has three seats with three candidates running for these positions. District 203 and District 308 have their candidates running as well. This is a forum and not a debate. Each candidate will be given two minutes to share their introductions, and after the introductions, each candidate will be asked a total of five questions. Each candidate will be given one to two minutes to answer each question. The introduction and questions will be asked alphabetically based on your last names in alternating order. We will close the forum with one minute given to each candidate for the closing statement. Candidates, please be sure to stick to the time limit. We will start with Candidate Karubis, your two minutes for your introduction.
Hello, my name is Justin Karubis. Thanks for having us tonight. I am a 10-year veteran of the school board. I am a lifelong resident of Indian Prairie 204. I am a graduate of 204, having gone to Clough, Ill, and Wabonzi. And I have kids that have gone to Patterson and Crone. I have two at Nequa and one is a graduate. I spent, before I joined the school board, I was five years on Indian Prairie Educational Foundation, which is the foundational arm of the school district that raises money to support the district in private donations or grants. My mother and sister taught in the district, and my dad was a founding member of Indian Prairie Educational Foundation. There's a map behind me, and this is the southern half of 204. This is Will County. I was born here and I live here, so I haven't gotten very far geographically. But I have used my expertise as an attorney and as a long-term resident to guide the school district with its $400 million budget, 2,000 teachers, 33 schools, and 25,000 students. Thank you.
Thank you, Candidate Karubis. Candidate Gens?
I'm not gonna lie, he is a tough act to follow. I do not have quite that much history. My name is Katie Gens. I'm currently a parent leader in District 204. I have two sons, a junior at Wabonzi and an eighth grader at Fisher. Since we started 11 years ago, I've been very active in all the schools that my kids have been in. Over the last decade, I've been president of four different PTAs, two school ones, two district ones. I am currently president of Indian Prairie Parents Council. So I'm very familiar with working with budgets, and given the schools my children have gone to, very tight budgets, and allocating funds where they really need to go. So I do like to think that that's a good skill I'll be bringing on, obviously, a much grander scale in the school district than, you know, the entire district than a school. It's a good place to start. I've also worked on boards for the last decade, many different people on them, so I have seen what works and what doesn't to be an effective board member. I think that that will help me in the long run as I am trying to voice my opinions, which are sometimes unique to the rest of the board and keep it respectful and make sure we're still making decisions that are in the best interest of everybody. I have had the opportunity to work with so many students and their families, parent leaders in our entire district, staff and administration. I look forward to bringing honestly my very unique perspective and voice because I have for the last decade talked to parents almost nonstop about different issues facing, not just our particular schools but the entire district. Things that they're worried about, things that they think are working, things that they'd like to see more of. So going into it, I have that perspective to help bring along with my own opinions from being a parent in the district for 11 years and continuing to be one. I think that honestly, I have such a big passion for this district, otherwise I wouldn't be volunteering for 11 years and deciding to just keep on volunteering. So I love so many things about it. I want to preserve it, even though I did not grow up in this district. I grew up in a nearby one. I absolutely love it, and this is the reason we moved here was to be in this district. So I look forward to working honestly with all the great people who are already on the board.
Thank you, Candidate Gens. Candidate Rising?
Hi, thank you Sabah and to the Islamic Center of Naperville. My name is Mark Rising. I'm a current school board member. I've been on the school board for 12 years. I've been a 26-year resident of the district, and I've been involved for over 22 years in the district at almost every level and every organization. I was one of the early members of Parent Diversity Advisory Council. You know, I, you know, got involved and kind of moved to this area because of our schools. I think like most of the people watching here, our jobs may have been here, but we chose to move here because of our great school district. And my devotion to be an informed, involved parent has grown to a desire to serve our community, and that's on the school board. And we should all be very proud of our school district. We have the second-best K-12 district in Illinois and the 36th-best school district in the whole country, 36 in the whole country. I continue to run on things that I've always been passionate about, which is the academic excellence of our students, but also making sure our students have supports in place and our students are in a safe, supportive, and welcoming environment. Fiscal responsibility, of course, is always vitally important. And 204 advocacy at the state and the local level. And then the last thing is communication and parent involvement. I want to get the parents involved to help me make my decisions, but to help the parents also assist in making the district decisions as we move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Candidate Rising. We will start with the Q&amp;A section of our forum tonight. We will start in the same order, Candidate Karubis, Candidate Gens, and then Candidate Rising, and then we'll alternate with that order. Our first question is, how would you work on current school policies to ensure students from different race, ethnic, religious background, and religious backgrounds will feel safe, included, and celebrated as a student? Candidate Karubis?
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna, it's multifaceted. I'm gonna take one aspect of that. And I think from my policy standpoint, one area that I would focus on would be bullying. I think in order for us to have an environment where somebody's comfortable with learning and in order for us to have an environment where we can be in a room together and operate, have lunch, gym, we need to understand boundaries and not engage in behavior that is offensive to people. And it starts at the young age where you learn how to regulate your behavior so that you aren't hitting people, touching people inappropriately. And then it advances to where discipline needs to be involved in the appropriate areas. Some of our, some of that is related to race, economic status, caste systems. So it, that's kind of one trance to look at it where in order to be inclusive, we need to know, we need to not bully people. And in order to not bully people, we need to have the strength to both stand up for ourselves and have an enforced, and learn how to behave appropriately. And then there does need to be a discipline aspect of it when people behave inappropriately. So the policy would be bullying, making sure that that is a practice throughout the system with fidelity. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Candidate Karubis. Candidate Gens?
There we go. Didn't want to unmute, I'm sorry. You know, I do agree with Candidate Karubis that bullying is a huge aspect of it. I do think another thing that is important though is staff acceptance too and understanding. And I think that if staff is understanding of certain things that need to be done during the day, you know, with certain religions, where it has to absolutely be done at that time of day when it is during school, to have that level of understanding and to frankly not make that a huge deal out of it because if they don't, I'd like to think other kids wouldn't as well. And when students are coming to school, fasting, and you know they have been, taking that into consideration too, you know, if they need to sit out in gym that day, you know. And I think it starts with things like that, but I think, I have to say, because bullying is honestly one of my biggest issues with schools. So I do have to agree that that is another huge aspect of it. And maybe as we all get educated, not just staff but students, and it does start at a young age, I think, learning to regulate your emotions. So I think with both of those things, and frankly, parents getting educated too, all of them, all parents, because we are a really diverse community. And I think that having that understanding from parents at home too, so when their child may come back, you know, from a school and say, oh, you know, I saw one of my classmates doing this, you know, they can take it as a learning experience and a chance to have a chat with their child. So I think if everything gets, you know, kind of more just normalized and accepted at several different levels and taught at younger grades, and we do kind of, you know, really discipline bullying when it does occur because it does, despite our best efforts to not have it, I think that all of those different aspects could help. All students feel welcome because really who wants to be pointed out for being different? Because frankly, different is wonderful. So I think everyone should be celebrated, and if we can do that at home, do that with staff, do that, you know, with all of our students, that's a great place to start.
Thank you, Candidate Gens. Candidate Rising?
So I'm gonna bring up a lot of things too here. So a couple of years ago, we passed an equity belief statement in the district. One of the lines of the equity belief statement is we are committed to creating a culture where our staff, students, and families feel safe, welcomed, respected, and a part of the school community. The board takes this very seriously, the superintendent does, and our building administrators and teachers should take this seriously. You know, we are living by our equity belief statement. You know, but there's also other things that need to happen, which are and have been, and we continue to do better and improve. But we have made sure that our teachers, for instance, have received culturally responsive teaching. So they understand different cultures, religions, backgrounds. Just within the last two years, there was a state mandate on Asian-American history, and we've infused that at all levels, at elementary school, middle and high school. So all students are learning to be accepting and learn about different cultures and religions. And, you know, I think we need to continue to do that, but here's what I'll say to parents. If they feel uncomfortable or if they feel that their childhood has had an incident, I would encourage them, all parents, to reach out to the teacher and/or reach out to the principal of your building because the teachers and the principals need to know this, and they will handle it appropriately. And then if that case you don't feel heard still, then you can bring it to the district.
Thank you, Candidate Rising. Our second question is, what measures would you take to ensure the curriculum that is selected does not feed into, give me one second. I was trying to make sure I can stop the timer in the background. Let me start all over again. Second question, what measures would you take to ensure the curriculum that is selected does not feed into implicit bias against any marginalized group? And as we go through this question, if any of the candidates would like me to repeat the question again, please feel free to ask me to do so. We'll start with Candidate Gens.
Thank you. You know, this is definitely a very complicated question with, I feel like, not an easy answer. But one thing I will say is that if we are just teaching frankly the truth, history, in all of its forms, and that's the best honestly place to start with any of this because, you know, and I understand it is hard for anyone when you're possibly teaching something to have some of your beliefs maybe come out as you're teaching it. It's inevitable, we're all human. But I think if we can do the best to give just a huge, honest, big picture of any cultures, whatever, you know, our students are learning at that time, and make it honest, make it the truth. Some of our truth in curriculum is uncomfortable, and it's not something that everybody is maybe proud of or, you know. But if we're not teaching our children true history and frankly, you know, even what's going on now, we're in danger of repeating the same mistakes we've all made. And it's not unique to just one culture, I mean. So I think there's things to learn, but you have to start with honest, honest, really just honesty.
Thank you, Candidate Gens.
Thank you.
Candidate Rising?
Yeah, this is a, this is a difficult one, right? Because I think all of us inherently, whether we know it consciously or subconsciously, have some form of implicit bias, right? It's unfortunate. But even our students who walk in the door may have some of that implicit bias, whether it's learned through social media or family life or what have you. Again, I think it all, first of all, starts with creating a safe and accepted environment. I think volunteering and getting involved and interacting with different social groups or religious groups and discussing that open and honestly and having critical, you know, conversations around some of those things, break down some of those walls. You know, I think it's also important to recognize and create a culture where regardless of someone's race or religion, everybody is an individual, right? So it starts there. Learn about the individual. Don't make assumptions. Don't make stereotypes. So, you know, I think there is a lot of that going on, but again, it starts with the culture of the building develops, and it also starts with our teachers and the cultural responsive teaching that they're receiving.
Thank you, Candidate Rising. Candidate Karubis?
I want to talk about two areas on this. One is the curriculum side of it, and then one is the training. The training is the quicker method where the teachers undergo professional development on implicit bias, and then they can apply that into their classroom. So that is kind of the immediate, short-term fix, but that doesn't, but that's an ongoing process and you continue to work on it and evaluate it. The bigger fix is actually making sure that it's not part of the curriculum. Remember when I said I was, I've been here forever? So we have curriculum that's been on the shelf for a very long time, and we just haven't looked at it in a long time. And so we have, as a district, endeavored to take a look at our curriculum. We've been responding to a lot of state mandates and, you know, state standards and playing the defense on curriculum. But we have some curriculum that's been on the shelf for too long, and it doesn't, it might have implicit bias, but we just haven't taken a look at it. So we have committed to the point where it's included in our strategic plan to do a curriculum review over the next five years to try to get all of our subjects done. But it's an extremely long, intensive process that takes administration, teachers, and in-board policy, there is a curriculum development policy that talks about, well, you should follow the law and should follow the standards, and then you should get teacher and administration involvement, and then you should hear from the parents and from the students and from the community on what should be in the curriculum. And I think if we go through that whole process again, we'll be able to look through it with the lens of implicit bias, culturally responsive, you know, just modernize it to make it more relevant to the classroom and students today. So those are the two areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Candidate Karubis. Next question. Students from different cultural and religious backgrounds have reported that there is a lack of diversity of teachers. Do you feel hiring diverse staff is important? If so, how would you work to ensure that teachers from diverse backgrounds are hired? We'll start with Candidate Rising.
Yeah, we've been working on this for 10 years. The biggest thing is there is not the pool of diverse teachers that currently exist. I think upwards of, close to 80, it might even be 90% of teachers that are currently in college are of white background. We have extended our reach and are starting to work with some colleges that are more diverse to try to have job fairs there and incentivize them to come to our district. We are also taking a look at some of the things that Rockford is doing because they've been able to work with local universities and, but we're also doing that in-house with growing your own teachers. So we're encouraging our own students who might have diverse backgrounds to consider teaching and incentivize them to come back to our district. So it's an ongoing process, but again, my fear there is that there just isn't the pool that exists out there currently, but we keep working on it.
Thank you. Candidate Karubis?
I agree with what Mr. Rising said. And so in my 10 years, I have not seen a lot of change in the makeup of the teaching pool. And in looking at who's in college, that pool is the same. So understanding that we are probably not going to significantly change the diverse nature of the teaching pool, what do you do then? And so that gets back to the professional development on these issues. So we all recognize that having a diverse teaching staff would have benefits, but it, that is, it seems to be an impossible goal at this point. And we've sent people, we've had interviews at historically black colleges. But why would they want to come to Illinois to teach? There's more barriers to that. So it's easier to take what you got and try to make it better. And so I think the professional development side is where we are going to make an impact on making the teachers understand some of the cultural divides that happen and involving the parents because the parents and the students have the diversity aspect to it. So that's where I would focus my efforts on. And so I don't want to sound defeatist that we can't do it, but we've tried, and now we're trying the next step. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Gens?
I do have to agree with both of them in all honesty and as a parent in the district for the last 11 years. And I know it's not from lack of effort. I mean, it is a very diverse district and everybody would like the staff to reflect that diversity. And to be honest, that goes beyond even the staff. And we've talked about this on PTA boards as well, where we would like people in leadership positions to reflect the diversity of the school they're representing. And there, there is a bigger pool at least to, you know, to delve into. And sometimes it is a cultural thing where, you know, they just, this is their first time in an American school. There's a lack of understanding. But I do know that what they are both saying is very true, that unfortunately, you know, but you keep looking and you keep trying to find new ways to do it and grow your own. I love that it's not just in high school, it's in middle school. So they are starting them even younger frankly on this teaching path. So my hope is that by doing those kind of things, it will eventually, you know, start yielding some results that we do have a more diverse pool, you know. But I do have to agree with Mr. Karubis that while we are trying to do that, and in the meantime, I think it is best to take the staff we do have and the staff we are hiring and give them the best ability to understand the diverse cultures that we are teaching and that we're dealing with. And I do think engaging families is an amazing way to do it. I think that reaching out to different cultures, frankly, more than we have been at schools, to get them more involved at the school level, to get them more involved in the classroom, that's another way to help staff frankly too. Because professional development is amazing, but also sometimes just knowledge from parents. You know, that one-on-one knowledge can go really far.
Thank you so much. How will you work towards progress and healing post-pandemic? Candidate Rising?
I'm sorry.
My apologies.
Oh, you cut out there, so we might not have heard the whole question.
Sure, let me repeat the question. How will you work towards progress and healing post-pandemic? Candidate Karubis? Can you still not hear me?
No, I'm good. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure that I was going. Yes, post-pandemic. I think the big one is mental health. I think we are, you see it, you know, a little bit with trying to get people back into the rhythm of things. And some of that is behavior, some of that is discipline, some of that is how do the students get on and off the stage during a musical? We've just kind of forgotten how to operate a little bit on some level. But mental health is the big focus, and we just ran a big mental health symposium. You know, we stopped the system and then we had to reboot it, and we are struggling. And we're all going through it as a community, as a society. So we need more supports. We're doing a lot of great things with outreach on the mental health front. on, on the mental health front. We, we've hired additional staff. Um, so I think that is the area where, uh, where I would focus is that, uh, you know, we all want academic achievement, but you cannot achieve academically if you are not behaving in class, if you're not engaged in class, if you're not attending class. Um, so I, that's where it's got to start. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Candidate Gans.
Uh, I agree. Honestly, last year was on really getting kids to just relearn how to behave. Uh, and the majority of children, I'll say mine included even, you know, where they almost forgot what it's like to be in school. And last year was still a little different, you know, and there were still a lot of restrictions. Um, in place for school events and stuff like that. So it was very different and kids are still relearning frankly this year how to, and, and it was, it was like a hard stop. You know, like Mr. Krubis said, and it is now. We're starting over again almost. And with some of these kids, they're catching on a little quicker than others, but you know, as a whole, this whole community is still, I think, trying to get back. And will we ever get back to where we were? Probably not, but we could get back to an actually new, you know, great place. It's just going to take a little time because this whole community went through this, the parents, the staff, the administration, the school board, every aspect of the districts went through all of this together and is just doing the best they can really to, to get back to everything. But mental health is a huge issue that I speak on all the time, but it's because it's true. And so I think what we're doing at the district's great. Obviously I would like if we expand some of those services to all the schools. Right now I know we're targeting ones that really, really need it. Um, but you know, I think it's also just bringing community back together at the school level and that's through different events. And now that we're able to have them, we can start doing that. So students can feel like they're part of something bigger again, because it's almost, it was a detached feeling from the school, even though you were there. So now that we're all kind of getting back together, this is the chance to make our students feel like they're part of the school, part of the district, you know, on every level again. So I think that there's so many different things we need to focus on over it, but I do think mental health and just getting that sense of community back are two of the most important ones.
Thank you. Candidate rising.
Yeah. So I think, uh, Mr. Krubis and, uh, and Ms. Pence kind of addressed the mental health issue. Uh, one thing I will add is um, as a district, we have committed 1.6 million dollars. Um, that's virtually unheard of. I haven't heard any other district in the state of Illinois dedicate that kind of money towards the mental health of their students. Um, you know, what, where I'll also touch on is at our December 19th board meeting, we had a very long conversation about, about getting our students back academically um, as well. And that's, that's a big piece of this, you know, the last two years, we've used almost all of the ESSR money that we got from the federal government to create uh, family engagement programs where we see students struggling. Um, we created academic boosting programs at the elementary school and middle school. We could, uh, uh, created a summer bridge program for the high school students. We've created a K eight STEM enrichment club. Um, so we're doing a lot on the mental health issue. We're trying to do as much as we can on the academic side. Um, and there's still a discipline issue that kids are still getting used to go getting back to school that we're, we're taking steps of improving as well, but, um, we continue to work on it to get back to as normal as we were. And, and I think we're getting there. Um, but, but we continue to make improvements.
Thank you, candidate tracing. Our next and final question. What are some of the measures you will take to advance equity among the special needs population, both academically and socially? We'll start with candidate Gans.
Thank you so much. And honestly, this is an issue that's, that's personal to me as well. Um, having two sons with IEPs and 504s, but one thing I, I do think that we all need to address, and we've all spoken on so many times, and there's no magic answer is staffing. I think that when we have such a staffing shortage of support staff, it makes it very challenging. And it's not from lack of looking and lack of trying that we are this short. It's just really every district is dealing with this, but that is one of the things holding us back from doing all that we want to do. Because I do think this district is absolutely great at recognizing children that need extra help, um, and what those resources may be. Can we afford to give them all those resources right now is the question though. And unfortunately, it, it's just not realistically happening for every student. So obviously I would love to see us get that support staff in and be able to figure out a way to get those resources, you know, that we need. Funding is always an issue though, uh, you know, as we know, so it is always a matter of where, where that money can go do the most good, but the core belief of the school board is we want every child educated, you know, and every student, and you can't do that if they're not getting the help that they need. Um, so I think right now it's a matter of really trying, you know, doing the best they can, but when you don't have that support staff in there, teachers, they have so many other students too. So it is challenging and being able to reduce class sizes is obviously something else that would be ideal in, in that there can be a little more attention given then to a student or two that may need it and don't even have an IEP or 504 because it doesn't always come down to that. But yeah, I, I do think that right now a great place to start, which I know everyone would agree would be great is to get more support staff in and be able to get all those students, the resources that they do need, because it's not a lack of recognition. It, it is just a lack of availability right now.
Thank you, candidate Gans. Candidate rising.
Yeah. So I moved to the district. Um, my wife was pregnant with our first child, uh, with a high likelihood that we would have a student that would have, um, needs that were above and beyond what a public school offers, which again, much like Katie, with both my children had IEPs. I was also vice president of special needs PTA for many years before I was on school board. Um, academically and socially, uh, I'll take the socially first. Um, socially, I think our students are incredibly accepting and welcoming and inclusive with our special needs students. Um, I, every middle school I know has inclusive programming in, in, in PE um, as well as high school. And I, I think integrating those students from a social standpoint, we do a wonderful job at. Um, the academic part, much like Katie mentioned, is where the struggle is. Um, it's, it's no surprise as a district, we have larger class sizes. Um, we are trying to work on that and chip away at that. But you know, when you have larger class sizes and you integrate a student who has special needs into the classroom, oftentimes, not all the time, but oftentimes that student needs another, an aid there. And aides are extremely hard to get right now. We've raised the hourly rate on aides and we still can't get aides. I think we've got, look at the job board, we've got dozens of openings for age right now for our special needs students. So um, you know, because of that, sometimes we have to, you know, put them in self-contained classrooms where the students can learn better. Now that's not ideal for a parent because they want them to be integrated. We, we also want to teach them the best ability possible that they succeed academically. So it's a constant battle there, but we continue to try to get better.
Thank you, candidate rising. Candidate Carubus.
So great. I, I agree with a lot of what was said. I'm going to take it in a different angle. Uh, we educate students that from 18 to 22 years of age as well that have special needs. And we've done some great things recently with our, that program, we call it steps. Um, and it has kind of bounced around over the years from um, being divided amongst different high schools to being at the Equal Freshman Center. Uh, and so we would have a, a 22-year-old student with a freshman student. And they would have a great age gap and then you would have to use the same restroom facilities. Uh, so we've done some great things there where we now have a separate space, an office environment where they can act more like a college environment, like a business environment. And they can work on skills like employment, um, get out into the community more. So instead of that population, 18 to 22, being in a freshman center, which is actually a middle school, now that that population is in a office setting, an office building. Um, and it's much more professional. It's much more adult and grown up and it's age appropriate. So and they're all together. So all the district, all the students across the district go to that one location. So that's just one area that, uh, shows how we're trying to benefit uh, the special, uh, special education population. Uh, and we're doing some great things with there. Um, obviously resources, um, you know, is a, is a huge aspect of it, uh, but but that's one I think that we have a, a recent win on that we should celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you so much, candidate Carubus. We'll end our forum with taking one minute each to, uh, finish with a closing statement and we will start with candidate rising.
Well, again, thank you to the Islamic Center of Naperville. Um, again, Mark Rising, um, you know, I, I love my faith and my family and my friends. But the way I approach this job as school board member is I want it for not only the best school district for my children, but all 26,000 plus students of 204. Um, no matter what, where you come from, what you believe, what you look like. Um, we need to have the best school district, um, and maintain that. And I think we have done that. In fact, we've continued to get better as a district. There is always room for improvement. Please don't misunderstand. But you know, I hope to do a, a wonderful job for our community for the next four years. I'll continue to be present in our community as much as possible and at every open mosque day. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I look forward to, uh, interacting with the community to help me make better decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate rising. Candidate Gans.
I do want to thank you guys too, first and foremost for having me here. I do understand that of the three of us, I, I am clearly the new one, um, to join the school board, but I do want to reiterate the fact that I am not new to this district or to the district's employees or administration or anything, you know? We moved here specifically for the diverse, um, group of people. So you know, I have dedicated the last 11 years to giving the best experience I absolutely can. And I did not do that just for my children. Um, I may have first volunteered for something for that, but it became much bigger than that very quickly where I genuinely care about every student in this district. I want the best experience possible for every student. And I have enjoyed every different aspect that I've been a part of. I have loved the parents that I've met. I've loved the students, um, the staff. I've loved the parent leaders I've gotten to meet in the last couple of years. And I very much look forward to frankly, the next chapter with this wonderful group of people on the school board to make different decisions, you know, and, and bring my unique voice from my unique area, frankly, over here at Wobanzie and Fisher. So you know, I, I feel like I have a lot to add to a group that's already doing very well. So, um, thank you guys again. And remember I am new, but not brand new.
Thank you, candidate Gans. Candidate Carubus.
Great. Well, thanks for having this forum tonight. I appreciate everyone's efforts. Uh, it is an uncontested election here, so I'm going to do some forward thinking on this and, and two aspects of it. All of the candidates here tonight and the current school board members, um, were approachable. We're in the community. Um, you can email me at Justin four two oh four at gmail dot com. You can follow me on Twitter at Carubus. Um, our email addresses, uh, on the school board are on the webpage. Uh, I might see you at Costco and you can stop me there and give me your opinion on what you want to have happen. Um, but we're out there in the community and so we need your input so that we can now take our district to the next level. What, what, what's concerning you? How can we improve? Uh, and then the, the second aspect of it that I think is a challenge to our whole community is we need to become involved again back into our community, our civic organizations, our, our charities, uh, our religious organizations and our schools. So I invite you, I challenge you to get involved in our schools again. Um, participation in the PTA, um, extracurricular activities. Um, it suffered during the pandemic and now it's increasing, but we need, we need more. That parent engagement, that community engagement will make us all better for it. So I, I challenge you, I invite you to be, to discover your schools again. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Carubus. Uh, on behalf of ICN and STEC, we thank you very much for your time. We wish you the very best for your reelection, candidate rising and candidate Carubus. Uh, and, uh, good luck to you, candidate Gans as well. Uh, we look forward to working with you all and continue to build on what we have done, STEC and ICN has done for many years. Good luck. Thank you so much for your time. Good night.